Yes.
Abstain.
Three affirmative, one abstention, and one absent. Mrs. Conan will be absent this evening. Tonight is a very special evening for a young lady that goes to the Oxford Public Schools and her family. I'm going to turn it over to you in just a minute, Mr. Superintendent, but right now, I'm just going to take a moment to recognize you, Emily. I never knew that we had such brilliance as you until probably a couple of weeks ago. And I have to say, I am more than impressed with everything that I have heard of your studies, of your future. I think that I would like you to tell the public, one of the schools that you are applying to, I think is fantastic, that you are considering Harvard. This is why we're here. You are one of the biggest reasons why we do the job that we do on this committee. We support all of your efforts. We support every child, every student, but efforts like yours really just show what greatness can come out of the Oxford Schools. And knowing your mother, I am sure that she has kind of nudged you along the way. She's been a great asset to our committee and we appreciate her time. Your parents have done more for you than you probably realize right now, but I think as you get older, you're going to really realize it because hopefully you'll pass it on to your own children. So in saying that, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent and he is going to let us know exactly what this award entails for you. But we really, honestly, are very, very proud of you and very happy for you. And we wish you all the best in your future education because I think we are going to hear about Ms. Barton as the time goes on and the years go on. So we wish you all the luck in the world and now I will give it to the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. It is with great pleasure that I get to make this presentation this evening. I think it's very noteworthy that Emily's middle school principal and high school principal are in the audience as well. The superintendent's award for academic excellence is the highest honor that we bestow on our students and it is through the auspices of the Mass Association of School Superintendents that every high school gets to recognize one of their students. And it is not simply all about the grades, although that is a big piece of it. It is also about, as one of your favorite expressions, the whole child, the whole student. And the work that this year's winner has done behind the scenes is exemplary as well. And I think having talked to Emily the last few weeks, she displays a level of maturity that would make any parent proud. And she has a terrific sense of humor and unbelievable analytical mind. And we wish her well. I would like to first read this and then I'll come up for the photo op with Mr. Traiano. This is the Certificate of Academic Excellence. Emily Ann Barton, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded this certificate of academic excellence and witness whereof, the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of schools are here unto affixed. And so it gives me great pleasure to announce this year's winner, Emily Barton. And if her parents could come up. There you are. And if we look at the camera, we'll get a shot. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well done and to Mr. and Mrs. Barton. Thank you very much for entrusting your daughter to us. And thank you to Mrs. Hackett and Mr. Wells as well.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. We look forward to following your career.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
If there's anything your mom or dad would like to add? Oh, come on.
We're very proud.
Mr. Peterson?
No, no, don't. But this is a proud moment. I guess I am showing my age as the senior of this committee, but Mr. Anderson and I watched your mother grow up in our backyard and it's really a pleasure to see the next generation go through our public systems and excel so well. Congratulations. In fact, your grandfather used to leave tomatoes on my back legs and feed us all summer. So you know where the spock came from. Congratulations.
Is there anything you'd like to say, Emily? You don't have to. It's just, I'm just making the offer.
No, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Good luck. Thank you. I'm going to go out of sequence just a little bit since we're on this kind of mode and we have another award recipient here this evening. Our senior member, as he likes to call himself, we like to refer to him sometimes as the golden member. Mark Peterson was awarded this weekend his life membership to the Massachusetts Association of Schools, of school committees at the conference room. Sue, Mr. Peterson, and myself attended down the Cape. This, this membership comes to him on a nomination from the school committee of which he has served for 21, right? Twenty-one years that we made, I think, last spring, I believe it was. And we are very pleased to be able to hold this honor for Mark. I think that 21 years says something for the work that he's put in. We may not always disagree, I mean, excuse me, we may not always agree and it's okay if we disagree, but I think that when you put in that kind of time and that kind of effort and take time away from your own family to help other families, it should be recognized. So, Mr. Peterson, again, we honor you. We congratulate you on your life membership. I understand it was a very good evening Friday night and we wish you the best also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to thank the committee, the past committee that just went off and now the present committee for nominating me. It takes a while to get this through and I wasn't really even too concerned about it, not even thinking about actually getting it. But with letters of recommendation from Pat Dewitzik, one of our old committee members, John Columbus from Eric Ansett, Fountain from Quabog, and Mindy Kemper from Southeastern, along with my own committee, seemed to expedite and push it through faster than it normally would. I was one, I'm not one to brag, I'm here for the kids, but I was one, I was number 125 inducted this weekend and that's only 125 members since 1947, since the association has incepted. And of those members, the president, the outgoing president of the association is automatic a life member. So that narrows it down to about 70 that have been appointed and awarded this membership since 1947. I really have to thank all of you. It was an honor. It was a great evening. I know you couldn't stay, Mrs. Ennis. You were there for the convention. Mrs. Riddley and Mr. Himmelberger, along with my family, were there for the recipient. It was a really nice night. Thank you.
Moving on, I will pass now to Mr. Himmelberger and he can explain to us the MOA we have received for the space at the community center that hopefully the central office will occupy since they are now kind of living out of boxes and are a bit in somewhat of a disarray, but operating quite well.
State of flux, for sure.
Operating, though, I must say, under the conditions very well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the packet is the memorandum of agreement that was sent back for rework and rewrite a couple of times. And because the community center is now being run as an enterprise account with an enterprise fund and the new Department of Revenue requirements that need to show the revenue actually passing into the fund is why we have to go through the formalities of this memorandum of agreement. As you see, it is vastly shortened from the original and really takes out, I think, what was a concern to the committee. And yes, there is a dollar amount of $39,600, but the wording and the language for terminations as well as the requirements year to year certainly pass muster. And it would be my recommendation, I will not speak for Mr. Matthew, but it would be my recommendation that this is a workable document and would be happy to entertain any questions if the committee has any.
I actually have a couple of questions. I think that we need to have an understanding for the public to also realize why the school department is, or I should say must, pay rent since we are the only department within the town that will pay rent for their office space. If you could just maybe touch upon that, I understand the enterprise account, but I think it's, it's better heard, maybe Mr. Matthew can, can voice on that. But we are the only department within this community that is kind of squeezed, I will say, to have to pay rent here. So if you could elaborate for us.
I'll defer to Mr. Matthew, but I just wanted to throw in, from where I see it, yes, it does seem on the face of it to be an unusual requirement. However, the town had looked for other space and due to a variety of circumstances, other spaces did not work out. And we feel that the, the community center is by far the best long-term solution for the town and for the school department. It provides a very central access. It provides parking. It is close to Town Hall where many, where much business needs to be transacted. And it is a long-term solution, not a temporary one. The building is in terrific shape and will be when all of the final renovations are done to it. It is certainly a unique situation. I believe that if there was no enterprise account, then there would be no pass-through of funds and I'll certainly let Mr. Matthew speak to that. However, the school department does get outstanding space that is very efficient and is a long way from our former space in terms of health, safety, cleanliness, and operating capacity. So I believe that this is a fair and good move for both the town and the school department for many years to come. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Zaneski, our town manager, for listening to the committee and listening to Mr. Matthew and myself, that we did not need a memorandum of agreement with so much detail and complexity. We only needed one to spell out two or three very key pieces. And so I believe that this is in the best interest of the town, the taxpayers, as well as the school department for, for a long term, for many, many years in the future. I'm not sure if Mr. Matthew wants to add anything.
I mean, there, yes, it is certainly a unique situation. However, the town finance director has indicated that the DOR, that something along these lines is needed for the DOR purposes. And I have no reason to think otherwise, having worked with the DOR in the past. I know that they have very strict accounting rules, especially for enterprise funds. In terms of paying rent, you could phrase it that way if you wanted to, but you could also look at it as really just the cost for our building space has gone up a little bit. Previously, we were paying for custodial maintenance, utilities, and those sorts of things. And we're taking that money and transforming it into a one-time rent payment instead. So while it's a little bit more than what we had previously budgeted for that purpose, we're still going, we were paying for those services anyway, we're just paying for it in a different form now. So.
If I could ask, if the enterprise fund or anything happens to the community center, will there always be an enterprise fund or is that a vote at, at town meeting to switch that over into a different kind of account?
Generally, once something becomes an enterprise fund, it remains an enterprise fund.
It does. Okay. All right. Any questions or comments, Mr. Peterson?
I do like the condensed memorandum. Again, I've been very vocal as to renting and I'm well aware, working for the department, what an enterprise fund is. So this is going to be a unique situation, the first. I've done some research. This type of a particular body going into an enterprise fund other than some other type thing where it's a, an elected body, et cetera. I do like, my only concern is, it seems long, but I guess I can live with it, number five, it's 21 months notice for termination, which at least I like. We go from year to year, not locked in for a 45, 50-year contract until we can determine if this thing is feasible, working out or not. I see, I see no reason that it can't be because I agree with Mr. Matthew from what we're expending on that particular building that, you know full well, I think should have been demolished 10 years ago. That's fine. We're finally getting out of there under, under duress. It's, it's finally come to fruition. My only other concern is, I figured out the square footage, et cetera, and the annual fee due by July 31st, prorated on a monthly basis of $3,300. But at how long will this rate stay that rate? There's nowhere in this provision that, that tells us that all of a sudden tomorrow he can't go to $59,000 for the next year. I understand expenses go up. They're going to be maintaining the electrical and the heat, which is gas, which was under our purview before and could control. This is going to be zoned, I am, I'm assuming. I have not been in to look at the final phase of the building. We will control our own section of the heating so that we're not paying for other heating for other organizations that are in the building.
Yes, no?
Yes. All right. So we still have some control over that at least. That does not mean that it can't fluctuate. Our gas fluctuated and so did our electricity. What arrangements, other than maybe verbal, have you secured with Mr. Zaneski on those terms, for those issues?
In terms of utilities, I believe it's.
Or, or holding this rate for how long or what duration?
Well, it is, it is my understanding, and Mr. Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that this will be the rate.
Year after year until we renegotiate something?
Well, this is the rate that's going forward. Both sides have that, as you mentioned, the 15-month or 20-month ability.
Removal clause, right.
Yep. To terminate. I would think obviously there's a, a point down the road, probably long after we are retired, that rates could change. Doubtful that they go down. Obviously, if they do go up, it would be for that committee to, to opt out.
All right.
So I would think that the town would have.
Again, I don't want to lock some other committee or someone else into something either, but I also don't want to see this thing go to 40, uh, $59,000 tomorrow just because something happened.
I think the town obviously has this.
I'm still here and I don't see that happen while I'm here.
I believe that the town financial officer, the financial officer has this figured in to cover and service the debt on the building. So I believe that it, it should stay that way for the long term.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Like to entertain a motion to approve this MOA as written?
Move to accept the MOA and enter into the terms of the agreement presently.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Four affirmative, one absent. We can get this off, need us to sign it first or do we know how many copies they want?
I think we can certainly have one signed and then if they need other copies, they can.
Okay.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you very much. And I will allow Mr. Himmelberger to continue since we have already had some snow days. Yet after this week's weather, would we be fooled to say that we had snow days?
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. As everyone knows, we've already used five storm days as of November 2nd, probably a record for a school district anywhere in the country. Two for a hurricane and three for the early snowstorm. I included in the packet the guidance from the commissioner on the 180-day requirement as well as the time on learning. And I wanted to have the discussion because I'm sure everyone has received a lot of information from a lot of folks that want to know what our plans are for the rest of the year. And I, I think there are several points worth noting. The commissioner, one, has been very consistent each year. He says that any day between the first day of the year and March 31st must be made up irregardless. Any day that's lost between April 1st and June 1st must be made, be made up until you reach the scheduled 185th day. The caveat obviously is that we have to maintain the time on learning requirement as well. And so both of these go together to meet the letter of the law. Also, any district that needs to close after June 1st would be held harmless through a waiver.
So we just stay of our snow until June 1st?
You could do that. You could do that. So I wanted to first commend last year's committee because the, the calendar was devised with this flexibility in mind. We condensed the calendar so that the start and end did not have a lot of extra days in it. It was really constructed around the, the state holidays and then the calendar ran as, as consecutive as we could. Therefore, on the original calendar, our last day of school, day 180, was Friday, June 8th, which is early. And most districts would be very happy if that came to pass. So day 185, which by law the committee scheduled, was Friday, June 15th. And that's where we are now. So that if we had no storm days, which I don't think has happened in a long time, we did have a year, a few years ago, we only used one snow day, that we would be getting out Friday, June 15th. For districts that either started later or stretched their calendar, they are going to have to make some decisions which will not please anybody. And those decisions might be, as the commissioner outlines here, to either do away with some or both February and April vacation, to make up time on Saturdays, or to condense into a March break. Now, I'm not sure if the commissioner was looking at the calendar, but the March break is impossible this year because of the MCAS scheduling. So those districts that do have significant storm days going forward are going to have to make those decisions. Just for the record, I did some research and over the past 10 years, we've averaged slightly under four days of, of storm day releases, cancellations each year. We had as little as one, we've had as many as six a couple of times, one being last year, one being for the ice storm year, 08. But we average about four days off due to snow, due to storms. And so if we did, if that held true, then we would be getting out Thursday, the 21st of June. And that would be as ideal as we could hope for. I think it becomes problematic to change to either a Saturday schedule through the spring or to take away some days out of February or April, primarily because you don't have the attendance when you do that. And yes, we need to make, we need to be in session 180 days. We need to be in session for 900 or 990 hours of, of instruction. But if you do it on days that are scheduled within the year, obviously the attendance becomes a factor. Many people have already made plans for either February and/or April vacation. Obviously, it would be up to the committee to decide if there was going to be a change in the calendar. But where we stand today, November 14th, 67 degrees this afternoon, even if we use all five of our average snow, snow days, we would be getting out Thursday or Friday, June 21st or June 22nd. And so obviously, if we missed 10 days in January for the worst winter in recorded history, yes, then I think at that point, we would have to put our heads together and look at changing the calendar. But for right now, heading into winter, I think that even if we use our average or an extra day, we're still in very good shape that a lot of other districts would like to be because of this committee did a nice job of scheduling this year. We are in very good shape, even having used five surprising days by November 2nd. So I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that because we, we did hear from a lot of folks who wanted to know which week of vacation we were going to get rid of. And at this point, we don't have to do anything. And I think we wait and see. Obviously, if we get to that March 31st magic date and we've only used three, four, five snow days, we'll be fine. So it's, it's really just letting us get through the winter. I will continue to use the same judgment that we have used and that is, I rely upon DPW to, to tell us if the roads are safe to travel. And then if they are, we have school. If they're not, we don't. And that is the only requirement that we have. And certainly with our terrain, with what goes on in one part of Worcester County compared to another, some districts may have school and other districts may not, but we will only go by what's safe for transporting our students. And I think that we are in very good shape as we move into the winter.
One of the questions that I have, the calendar, I understand is our own calendar.
Yes.
If at any point we wanted to discuss alleviating either February or April vacation, would that be our choice?
Yes.
Or it is completely our choice?
Are you talking about future years?
I'm talking about future years.
That is the school committees?
Okay. Because I asked this week, this past week, and some people said it was a legislative, some people said it's our, so that's why I'm looking for some clarification. Everybody has their own take on everything, so.
It is purely.
It's been ours this year to alter the calendar.
Absolutely.
Go into emergencies.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, we can still.
It is up to the individual school committees to decide as long as they meet the 180 days and the 900 or 990 hours of instruction, that the committee can do what they decide.
Okay.
Obviously, I think it was last year, we looked into the February versus April merging into March as an option. And many districts tried it back in the 90s.
As we did.
And found that after a year, it just was not working and went back to the traditional calendar. I think that as long as the MCAS schedule really is what we have to work around, until that is changed, that's going to really limit the flexibility. But there are pros and cons and everyone has an opinion on what is best going forward. I certainly think that unless Governor Perry becomes president, we're probably still going to look at a Department of Ed that's going to increase the number of days that we go to school. So that the 180, I'm sure, will, will only get, get bigger.
One of the three.
One of the three.
As we go, uh, as we go forward. But it's certainly, uh, up to the individual school committees to set their calendar and to adjust their calendar to meet the requirement.
Okay.
I think a lot of folks will only make the change if the state decides to take over that and, and make it a mandated calendar.
Right.
For now, it's in the hands of the local school committees to, to make that requirement.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I heard Mr. Peterson and Mr. Himmelberger, uh, why didn't it work out when they changed, you said it didn't work out? Why didn't it work out if we changed the calendar to, uh, to February or make it eliminate February vacation and send it into the first week of April? I've noticed kids are being out of school now, they just don't care if they go down to Mickey Mouse Country during school now. I just can't see it, uh, being a big difference of eliminating one vacation and having the kids get out at the beginning, end of May and possibly the first week of June.
Mr. Himmelberger?
There is, uh, no shortage of reasons why committees wanted to try that, uh, Mr. Anderson. And for those reasons that you mentioned, to shorten the year and get out earlier, um, the reason being it gets a little warm in the buildings at the end of June. Um, but there are some valid reasons why it does work. One, obviously, is vacation patterns. The biggest one is one that we don't often think of, and that is that, uh, Department of Public Health, um, tracks it and, and you improve your attendance by having that week off. Because as the bugs come and go within the buildings, to get everyone out of, um, one location for those weeks really helps the attendance, uh, throughout the spring. Um, so there are, there are pros and cons to it, um, and certainly, um, a lot of districts did experiment. I believe I still have that research that I can give to the committee. Uh, I, I looked at probably 70 or 80, uh, districts that responded as to, um, when they tried it and how long, and most of them only lasted a year. Uh, and I think it's, it's just that, that, uh, folks are, um, used to the calendar schedule. And when you weigh, uh, giving up a vacation week during the year, um, to get out that one week earlier, um, I think a lot of districts, um, including us, have, have opted to start prior to Labor Day, and that seems to have alleviated a lot of the issues.
Mr. Peterson?
Well, I'm not going to go into it, Mr. Himmelberger, but I could refute every single sentence you said. Uh, we tried it for one year, uh, was not given the chance to try it into a second year. We had a lot of pressure from the unions, parents, everybody else, because that's Mickey Mouse week normally. As Mr. Anderson said, it doesn't matter today. Mickey Mouse week is anytime to take the kid out, they don't care how many days they miss or anything else. Um, there were some, there was some language in some of our union contracts also. Even though we have the right under emergency clause to schedule it that way, um, it did not set well with the parents or the teaching or the custo- uh, or the union staff here is one reason. So they, we just succumbed and I was not one of them, but to go back to the old schedule. It's the only place in the country, the northeast, that has three vacations. Um, I, again, I can refute 90% of what Mr. Himmelberger says with national figures, other states' figures as far as health. Whether it's hot elsewhere, it's cold elsewhere, we have sickness elsewhere, it was not given by any school district substantial time to try and work into one vacation. And the biggest beef, the teacher said, "Well, the kids need those weeks off to rejuvenate, refresh themselves." Want to ask me? The teachers want that week off to rejuvenate themselves. And, uh, they don't normally throw stones at the teachers, but that's where it became the rolling stone and it was just easier, um, for the previous committee that I served on when it was done to reset it and go back to the old ways. So we're in our creatures of habit and our old ways without even looking at something new or experimental at this point in time to-
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Can I just answer my question about contracts? I didn't realize the school schedule is, vacation is under the contracts with the teachers. I would love to look into that.
No, no, I didn't say that, Mr. Anderson. We have autonomous right to set our schedule at any given time. Uh, there were certain caveats in the contract to give them due notice and, uh, how we were going to make it up, et cetera, without just dumping on them the day, the day before, the week before, as an example.
Okay, sorry. Uh, could we open this up for discussion at another time?
Absolutely.
About changing-
For next-
Upset away for, for next year's calendar.
I actually, I actually have a thought on that. Um, it was one of my notes that I had to have done, that possibly one of the better things to do would be to have a subcommittee.
Start studying with the future.
And put together the subcommittee to do some research and present it back to the school committee so we can see what their findings are. I understand some of Mr. Peterson's points. It is hot other places, it is cold other places, it is, you know, let's maybe get together a, uh, small subcommittee. I think it would be short research that needs to be done and have them present and recommend to the committee. So that would probably be the next thing that we'll do. And I think that would be most beneficial for us.
The committee including like the staff, et cetera, too.
I, I would actually want teachers on that.
To hear from them also.
Yeah, definitely.
Parents.
Definitely, definitely parents. So if anyone has any parents-
Those are the two big core indicators.
That they know that they could invite in, that would be most welcome because we do need more parent involvement on our subcommittees, which is something I'm going to discuss later in the meeting. All right, so is there anything, any other questions or comments in regard to our snow days? And let's hope that the weather holds out because, uh-
The only comment I had was that I didn't realize that you couldn't add minutes to a day. Um, because I think that that, at this point in time, this being this early in the year, that might be an option for us, but it, from reading this document, you can't, you can't, uh-
Advance, yeah. Add, you can't add an hour a week or whatever to make up for your hour time. Um, which is unfortunate because that is, I think, one of the easier fixes.
One of the big-
You know, adding just an hour if you needed to here, there, uh, to make up your hours. So, okay. Anything else? All right, Mr. Himmelberger, please continue with the Chaffee surplus playground equipment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm not sure how many people know, but the Chaffee Playground Committee has, over the years, purchased, um, many things, um, for that, uh, building. This particular, um, structure is, uh, the multicolored, it's a rainbow-shaped structure. Uh, it's constructed out of metal tubing, um, and it was removed from the Chaffee Playground because it was a safety hazard. It was really, uh, used primarily for students with special needs and, um, some of the pieces were missing and the bolts were exposed and causing a lot of, um, hazard. So it was taken away. I would defer to Mr. Matthew or Mr. Peterson because where it was purchased through voluntary fundraising, um, I'm not sure if we needed, we need to, the committee needs to, uh, vote it out as surplus or just, um, vote to recommend to, to, uh, remove it.
Is it the piece of equipment that's out by the shed?
Yes.
Yes.
That's it?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I believe we do have to surplus it because it was all purchased but donated to the school department and erected on our property. It's not really real property because it's not attached to anything, but it, it does become our property. They had donated everything even after the fundraising, so I would suggest that you take an official disposition of it and, uh-
Mr. Matthew, you agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
They could just-
I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Barone was contacted to see if it, uh, if he could use it up at his school.
Okay.
Because it taps to deal with a wheelchair and a ball that went inside and-
Okay.
The kid sat on a wheelchair and moved it all around. It became a hanging thing down for the little kids down at, at the school at Chaffee and they could get in there.
Okay.
That's why we pulled it out of the ground.
But if it isn't worth repairing or replacing, I would not move it to Mr. Barone's building.
Mr. Barone doesn't want it, so.
Okay.
Hope it's not safe.
I'll move the surplus up.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Four affirmative, one absent. Thank you very much. On to correspondents. I received today a letter from the OEA. Dear Mrs. Ennis, please be advised that is the attention, intention of the Oxford Education Association to open negotiations for the upcoming contract for 2012. Sincerely, Kathleen Cassavant, President, Oxford Education Association. Just so everyone knows, our next meeting, which is November 24th, I do believe, we will be going into executive session to discuss all of our contracts that we have. Um, and that needs to be open, some, we hope that will be, we will be discussing the superintendent's contract and Mr. Laporte's contract during that executive session. So I'm going to hold that until then. And let's see, we don't have any subcommittees, but actually, I'm going to speak on subcommittees for a moment. We need to activate our subcommittees. We need to activate quite a few of them. After going to the conference and, um, going into some of the sessions, we have a lot of work coming up that the Department of Ed is thrusting upon all school committees in the Commonwealth. One of the most, which I think was one of the most vital for discussion, especially research necessary by a subcommittee, is the teacher evaluation and the superintendent evaluation. Those new documents that are coming out are, um, pretty heavy duty. They are, uh, not easy. They have a lot of information, a lot of detail to them. The one really good thing about the superintendent evaluation is MASC at no charge will come and do a day retreat with us. And they will go through the evaluation for us, they will, they will help us decipher the document, which is extensive. It, uh, calls for the superintendent to self-assess himself or herself. That information comes back to us and then we kind of go into a very long process of evaluation. It's not the same evaluation that we've been using for, I think, the past, geez, I think now five years, I think it's been. The teacher evaluation document, again, is another, um, lengthy process. It is not necessarily for us, but it does become part of our policy. So we have to look into that. Now, since everybody's getting evaluated, they're also recommending that the school committee do a self-assessment and evaluate itself as to the job that they're doing. I sat in on that session and the superintendent's session and I really enjoyed that. I thought that that was a brilliant idea, a brilliant way, um, to kind of set a path that we all can, can follow. Everyone can see how the school committee is doing. We can, um, bring the public into it to a degree by them seeing the document when it's finished. And also, MASC will compile all of the information that we give and then bring it back to us. We won't have to give all of our information to any of our school secretaries, to anyone in the central office, to, to DRC, anybody. We'd send it all to MASC and then they would send it back to us. So that is something that, um, I think that we need to, we need to, um, enact as quickly as possible because these, these documents are quite, like I said, very extensive. There's been some changes, as we know now, to the open meeting law. I sat in on that session with Mrs. Raveli. And now, uh, we can have remote meetings. So that means if any of us, um, can't be here for, it must be under a reason. It's just because we don't feel like coming. It has to be illness, an emergency, something like that. We can bring a, um, uh, speakerphone into the meeting. We can hold the meeting with the person not being here. So these remote meetings now are something that, uh, the law, we didn't get to see the law because I think he had said, the Assistant Attorney General said, "We were just getting the info", but I think it's in print now as of Monday. I believe-
It is on Saturday, they went over again.
They did. Okay, okay. Okay. So that is another, uh, another big change. And there are a few other small changes to the open meeting law that we need to, uh, abide by, of course. Another subcommittee that I believe we need to, um, open quickly and I'm hoping it would be a short span for a subcommittee is communication. I had a great conversation with a school committee member who was out in the western part of the state and she and one of her colleagues explained to me how their communication, let's say there's an incident in school. They have seven separate line items that would tell the superintendent, he needs to notify the school committee of whatever the incident is. You never hear the student's name. Um, but it, it, it kind of makes the superintendent's job and our job a little bit easier, I think, especially for the superintendent, so that he doesn't have to contact us, meaning they're busy enough, contact us to let us know about small issues that may arise. But these are kind of bigger things, like, like one of the last issues was, unfortunately, Mrs. Hackett, you had a little flood here. So we were told about that. Um, and if there's any incidents of vandalism, things like that, we're told about. But I think that this is something that we can look at for different levels of communication that, that the, uh, school committee has to adhere by. So I am going to, next meeting, if anyone is interested in any of these subcommittees, these are all going to be posted online. Uh, we do have a few subcommittees already in place, uh, and policy. We need to also have one just strictly for policy. I think Mrs. Coonan is on that one right now alone because she was serving with Mrs. DeWittzick, so we'll have to add, uh, one of the members here. And I'm hoping that we get a parent or two on some of these committees too, so that they can see the workings that, that we do every, every day. Um, let me see what else I had in regard to that. I think that's it for, for polit- for, uh, subcommittees. So we have, one, two, three, four, five, six committees to, to open up. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Superintendent, you may continue on.
Thank you, Mrs. Ennis. Just had a couple of, uh, more, uh, quick points, uh, mostly as information. Uh, we are having our first half day in several years. Uh, it's coming up Wednesday, November 23rd, uh, which will go back to a traditional half day before Thanksgiving. As everyone knows, we've had that day as a no-school day for the last several years. And so the high school, and we'll, we will post this on the websites, high school will be dismissed at 10:45, the middle school at 11:30, Barton at 12:25, and, uh, Chaffee at 12:40. But we will post those online so that all parents know, uh, when their children will be coming home that day. Um, also, um, there had been a lot of talk about, at the federal level, about the no-child-left-behind law and how it, it is no longer serving its purpose. And many states now are submitting waivers so they do not have to operate under that law for the remaining two years of the law. Uh, one example is certainly the fact that our fourth graders and eighth graders and our NEEP scores score off the charts and lead all leagues, uh, with their achievement. And yet, in Massachusetts, over 80% of our districts and, uh, schools and 90% of our districts don't make adequate yearly progress. So, uh, the commissioner did file today, um, for a waiver for no-child-left-behind. There are some other pieces of that that, um, will be put in place primarily to close the achievement gap. Um, it's not a, uh, a free ride by any stretch, but along with the district accountability levels, and this waiver, uh, we will be still held accountable. So that, uh, did happen today. And the last thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention is that, uh, every year for the last several years, the Student Council has run a turkey run.
Yeah, turkey run.
Um, the Monday before Thanksgiving. And in Oxford alone, we have over 120 families that use, uh, our food pantry every week. And it's a real crisis and, um, you know, our students do a lot of good things. Um, and, uh, in, on the, on the school webpages, you can go and see them. And so I wanted to make sure that the school committee knew that they were also, uh, on the team this year, uh, along with myself, and that we were looking to, uh, continue our dominance in, in-
We do dominate the turkey run, absolutely.
In raising, uh-
We do.
-dinners to be given out. And this year, what we are doing is the Student Council, with the DPW's help, is going to collect all their food on Monday and then have it driven straight to the food pantry.
Right.
And then that will be given out there. So, um, it's, it's something that the Student Council really has gotten a lot of folks behind and it's for a worthy, worthy cause. And that is all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Peterson?
Uh, to Mr. Himmelberger, are you accepting cash as well as donations of food or whatever?
I will certainly accept cash because that will help me procure all the things that I need.
I don't have, I don't have the time to do the shopping this year.
Well, I, I get it- Well, I get it done that Sunday and Monday very early.
I challenge the rest of the committee to match me.
How much are you giving them?
Thirty.
I saw, I thought it was a 50, that's $80.
That's $80 there.
Eight, I don't see eighty.
I don't have another 20 or what have been...
But we will get together, and I'll be in touch with everybody so we can...
Take it now while I have it.
Put together our baskets for this.
Now, the food needs to be, oh, I'm sorry, forgive me, the high school on Monday?
Monday, at 2:30, and the details are in there. It's the same...
Do we still make our own little box and everything?
Yeah.
It's an extra 10 points for a decorated box.
And I always decorate my box.
I'll give you another five to get a bow or something from the box.
Don't worry, we'll, we'll have that covered.
We want your red tie.
We may not get the points on decoration, but we're going to get it in the fall.
Put the bow down on it.
Thank you.
I have an extra bow tie and tie, too. It's already tied, you can use it for a ribbon, it doesn't matter.
Well, thank you, Mr. Peterson, for kicking us off here.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, it was Mr. Peterson's moment in the sun. Go ahead, sir. You're up.
What's that? I'm not sure I want to be, but I guess I'll do it and get it over with. I don't really have much tonight except for, I did leave out Mrs. Moyle's, which is really an honor for me to be the second one from Oxford. Mrs. Moyle's served 18 years on this school committee. Was also a life member, about 10 members ago ahead of me. So Oxford should be proud that you have two members on this committee, that we, no matter what happens to us now, we're allowed to serve on the association for the rest of our life, on any committees that we chose to see fit at the state level, local levels or whatever. So it does not preclude us from taking part in education in the future. And that, and the one other issue, Mrs. Zennis and Mrs. Raveli, yes, they did bring it up again Saturday morning, but I was there at the later session, and it is law, but it's still being redefined as to, because some, some communities have started it and voted it on their own as far as what you're talking about of electronic meetings or now-show meetings, ask me for extreme clauses, we will have that. But it is expensive, and some committees have gone to remote hookups to whoever this person is in the hospital, home, wherever. So it can get expensive, so it'll be something that has to be looked at and thought out thoroughly. I am for it because there have been instances where we've had to or should have used the remote and weren't able to. So hopefully that will work itself out in the bugs. And I guess the only other thing I have tonight is just I'm going to serve notice. It's early, and some have asked me why, but I'm giving notice to give people the opportunity to formulate their own committee or whatever. I am not seeking reelection this May. I will be fulfilling my term of the 21 years, continuing to stay on the legislative resolution. And I was appointed Saturday to a new committee, and I really have my passion and want to work on this with some time, to the Early Childhood Committee. And with the new commissioner there, she's been at it only three years. They've been able to change some of the laws to form, formulate to make early childhood fall under the Department of Ed, but there's still a big transitional gap between early childhood and elementary and secondary education with the Commissioner and Commissioner Chester. So we will be working, three of us from the association have been appointed to represent your school committees on the state committee, along with the two commissioners and some people from the Department of Ed, teachers, directors of early childhood centers, to make this transitional gap viable. Because there's such a diversity in early childhood, from parochial to Catholic to private, what they call faith-based, non-faith-based, there's about 10 different types of early childhood which have not fallen properly under the umbrella, and not all are having to report the same. I won't belabor that, I'll give you more information as we go, but I'm going to focus my energies at this point in time on those three committees that early childhood, also like resolutions, recommends to the legislative committee, which we recommend legislation to our legislators, and right now we do have one pending that has gone through. It's taken us five years to get it pushed through, but there is a bill, 210 or something, I'll give that to you next week. So I won't belabor this, but I would like to thank my wife and family who've been at my side right from the onset. Seven, seven elections is not easy to run. They've been with me every step of the way, my major support for all, and my wife has been my most ardent supporter for all functions here at the school. Everywhere I go, she goes, from graduation to NGLTC balls, to games, to whatever. I don't think I can remember one event that she has not been with me. So I'd like to thank, thank my constituents and my family for their support, but it wasn't an easy decision for, for personal, family, and I just, it's with some remorse, but at this point in time, while I'm still ahead of the game, I will, I will step aside as of May and leave the office and give somebody time to formulate their own candidacy. And I know when I first ran, I only had about three weeks to throw my hat in the ring and get something organized. It's tough to do. So I'm, we'll be leaving within plenty of time to give somebody the opportunity to go in for my seat. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Anderson?
Well, Mark, I'd like to thank you for the 21 years. I believe I was in high school when you came aboard. Darcy and I...
Thanks, buddy. I know Darcy and you were in high school.
Darcy and I were in high school when you came aboard, you know? You watched, you watched Darcy and I grow up in the neighborhood. We didn't watch Darcy grow up. Really, Mark, I appreciate all you've done, and my other thing was vacation, and we're going to touch on that in another basis, former committee.
Yep.
That's all I have to say, darling.
Thank you very much. Tony, we'll take a break here so you can do whatever you need.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm not too surprised, but I'm sorry to hear that May would be the end of it, and maybe we can change the ceiling of that ship. I, too, I was concerned about the, the remote meetings that they were talking about, but it seems like there are ways, as long as we set policy surrounding it, how we're going to deal with it, whether that's going to be, you know, something as elaborate as sleeping or if we're just going to simply have a telephone here so that somebody can listen in and comment. The one thing they did make clear, though, was that that person still couldn't be a part of the vote, so you still had to have a majority here. That, that was the one thing that they made clear.
That's right, yes.
So you would still need the members, but that, that person could at least participate in the conversation which was going on. Other than that, I think one of the most interesting things that went throughout this entire weekend really were, were the evaluations, especially the teacher evaluations and the different ways that they're presenting and talking about having teachers do some of the evaluating and not, not simply the administrators, which really helps the administrators, I think, in the long run. But it's a process. It's, it's a process that we, I don't believe we've started yet.
No, we haven't.
Other than that, I, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And I've done enough talking also. I think that I can say that Mr. Peterson will be missed. It was always nice to have a little argument here and there with Mr. Peterson, but he will be missed, and, and I, I, too, thank him. And yes, he's, he's right, Ruth was with him every step of the way. So we thank you and your family for, for your time, too. And it's not over yet, you still have some work to do, so.
I will finish my term, yes.
Yes, you certainly will. Do I have, you have a little time? Okay, I'm going to take a moment to open the floor. All right, I will close the floor. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes. Oh, I, yes.
Four affirmative, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.
It doesn't matter, we're off the record, but I have these books, I'm going to leave them from the conference. I know you two had your joint conference, but for anybody else that wants to see what the conference was packed with and for, and the vote, as my last term is delegated assembly also, all five resolutions passed unanimously with only one having an amendment to it, which is very minor, which is a language amendment, it's all the ones in your book have been passed for this year. But I will leave these at the central office with my, my notes in it for anybody that would like to look at them, and if they have any questions, they can see me, but I thank you for attending the conference.
And Mrs. Hackett, thank you very much for allowing us into your building this evening. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
I'll see, I'll see.
Where's she going?
She went to Popery.